I'm being recorded.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you.
Should be good now.
Yeah.
All right. Good thing. Okay, call me into order. I guess I need to call the roll, we have no. Down so Keith Campbell's here.
Kyle too.
Gallagher's here.
Steel Smith here. Edson Brown's here.
Five members are here. And the. Zoning directors here also. So we have agenda there, motion to approve the agenda with flexibility. I make a motion, we accept the agenda with flexibility. Second.
Third.
Favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. We need a lot of flexibility tonight. We have no.
I can't.
Zoning assistant is had an emergency, can't be here tonight. So. So there'll be no minutes to do, we supposed to have a hearing at seven thirty-five, I see no applicant here. And. Yes, you have no new applications coming? So. Zoning directors report.
You're doing about really whole lot going on so far this year, we only got. Six. Permits so far, so no law action that. Other than that, I can go around and do some. Do some property checks.
Do a sign, sign in over there at the table. It's time for our hearing at seven thirty-six, so. Have a motion to recess the meeting. To open up our hearing.
I'm gonna recess the meeting.
A second.
My second emotion.
Favor say aye.
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 Same sign. Okay. We're ready for you people now, so. You wanna come up to the podium?
Started, you can push that drawer shut in front of by the computer if that's in your way.
Oh, yeah, um, oh.
That back.
Name and address. That we do.
Yeah, wait a minute here.
Okay.
Get, we gotta start the hearing, so I will call the hearing to order. And call the roll again. Keith Campbell's here.
Ferris is here.
Bill Gallagher's here.
Jim Steel Smith here. Simon Brown.
Eight of five members are here. My first thing I need to explain the process to hearing, first off, we'll have a. Most staff reports from zoning inspector if need necessary. Then we'll hear from the applicant. Or their representative, any adjoining property owners. They can build for comment for them. And we'll have open up for public comment. All comments must be relevant to the issue before the board. All may be cross-examined on their statements. All questions to presenters and cross-examiners will be directed to the chair. All persons speaking will stand and come to the podium. All person that's speaking will state their name and address for the record. All person speaking and giving testimony sworn in. At this time, everyone wishes to speak. Raise your hand and you solemnly swear to tell the truth.
Yes.
Yes.
Do you wish to speak tonight? Are you gonna be speaking? And you swear you tell the truth.
You're gonna speak up a little louder.
I'm sorry. Okay. It's time to make questions on the procedures. There ain't extensions for many of the board members.
Remote.
Hearing none. The hearing was advertised properly in the paper. I don't have the ad in front of me, I can't get to the record, but we'll make sure it gets in there. Time of the application received, the list of joint property owners received and reviewed found to be complete. The joint property owners were notified by first-class mail. Time for. The mic, any question, any comments, I guess. I think he has none. So at this time. The applicant will present what they're asking for tonight, need to state your name and address, please.
Kesha Anas five eight zero one Miller Paul Road, Westerville. And.
Chuck Anas five eight oh one Miller Paul Road, Westerville.
How'd you pronounce your first name?
Kesha.
Kesha?
Kesha. It's like an S H sound, Kesha. It's different.
It's not plugged in.
Yeah. If I have to go over here.
Okay.
Disturb us.
No worries. Um, you had wanted additional setbacks. I have those, do you mean.
The table has a secretary's mic, so.
Ten copies.
A post do we have to have it?
It's good, yep.
Mike, did you have any comments about this?
I've noticed that's enough for the report.
If you want to proceed with what you're asking for tonight.
Did you review this? Did you review all this? We've been out of the country for the last month, so I'm like, where are we? We were asking for conditional use, is that what we were doing?
Yeah, in-home occupation, expanded in-home occupation.
Uh huh, thank you. I wasn't sure exactly what it was, but yes, to run a photography studio out of the existing barns that were on the property.
You want to. Is in section eight oh four on page eight oh three. Initial uses for expanded in-home occupation is this is an FR one property. Look at that, if any questions that we have. Looking through. So could you explain? How the app, this is gonna operate and give this kind of summary of what you're thinking it's gonna be like?
Um, well, it'd be open seven days a week. Try, I didn't know somebody had a question, from eight to six, so there would be a website where people could go and book online. It books an hour at a time, they have to sign waivers when they book, agree to our terms and conditions and all of that. And so the first person potentially would be in at eight AM and then the last person would be out by six PM and. That would, that would basically be just seven days a week running. And we don't anticipate it being like completely full every single day of every single week of.
According to our resolution. You use up to thirty percent of your dwelling unit, so I think you may have an office in your, in your house or something to do your billing or paperwork.
Uh huh, yes.
Cannot use no more than thirty percent of square foot of your, of your dwelling for this business.
Okay.
Uh, the rest of it will be out and the accessory building, right?
Correct. Correct.
Parking, room for. Fifty customers, I, I look at the.
Yeah, we feel comfortable with, yeah.
I look, I did look at the. G I S and Delbert. Website and it's like it's on your parking there. Uh, you, and lights, the parking lot or anything like that, or?
Yes, there, there's nightlights there too.
Well, those lights need to be downward facing and not facing towards the neighbors, so.
They are.
Okay. Uh, there's no outside storage allowed of. Your stuff for your business, so I don't see where you have that issue coming up, so. Noise and odor controls and electrical stuff, I don't see that. Photography doesn't usually interfere with the neighbors' electric, I don't. Any hazardous materials that's involved with this?
None.
Deliveries and pickups according to the resolution of about ten a week. See that being an issue. When I read of your. Number here. Uh, there's no outside displays of goods for sale. Think you're selling much anything anyways, so you're doing a service then they are.
Yeah.
Correct.
Uh, your hours of operation, you said eight to six. In case, I mean, you know, they like savings time, it's easy to go later, I mean, now's the time to. If you wanna modify that or adjust it. My. My big concern is by ten o'clock, you should not be anywhere.
Oh.
Or whatever, so.
Hundred percent, yeah, no. We live there.
By that time.
Yeah, no.
But you know, that, that's somewhat, you know, two or three o'clock in the morning, people coming in.
Nope. Won't happen.
Okay. These are existing, uh, building, they like pole barn type built construction or they?
Yeah, one was built in nineteen ten and the other one was built in nineteen forty. And we just, because I tear down old barns and farmhouses pretty much in the township. And then I reused, we reused a lot of the wood in both studios, the loft and the barn.
I see you requested to and asked that you're allowed to have two outside employees, and I said, you're not planning on using it right now, but if.
Yeah.
Need comes, you know. You need help sometime because whatever you're doing, you know.
Right.
All right. Anyone else have any other question? Oh, by the way, uh, this is. An art type use or artistic instruction, basically what you're calling this, right? Photography is like an artistic.
It is.
Your instructor be how to do this. Anyone have any other questions?
The two buildings that are the structure for the studios, uh, did I understand you to say that those were put in, the foundations were put in a long time ago?
Correct.
Or were they again, you, you had some dates?
Nineteen, that's what I was told by hell, when I bought the property, hairlines told me. That his father in nineteen ten was the big cow barn.
Okay.
And then the one next to that, which is the loft, was nineteen forty-something.
Okay, okay, so you didn't put them up?
No, no.
Okay. That's.
No.
They came with the house thirty years ago, so they were there.
Looking down on an aerial, so I can't.
Okay.
But that, that's fine, okay.
I don't know if you have the pictures of the interior.
Yeah, we saw the interior.
Yeah, those.
Those are nice.
Farmhouse that on Miller Paul in Fancher that I, we tore down. That has some beams in there from eighteen fifty.
Mm-hmm.
So there's some really old wood in there.
Okay, that's cool.
He gets mad at me though, because I like to paint it white, he's like, don't paint that.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Understand, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I know, most men do, you know, and I'm like, it's photography, it needs to be light and bright.
Gardeners and carpenters here, we don't, we don't like that.
I'm sorry.
Any other questions?
No, I'm good. You good?
I'm good. Let me see what I got here.
You have to ask if there's any public comments?
Yeah, I'm going in a second here.
Okay. Where'd you go out of country?
Mexico.
Mexico?
Yeah.
I would, I would have thought you guys went to Europe.
No, we went to Mexico, we have a little.
Mexico's cheap. Uh, it's cheap in.
Oh, okay.
You can get tacos for so cheap. Yeah, 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 we love, we go every year, it's great, yeah. Kids all come, it's fun.
Uh, one other question I got is. Your trash and waste and all that, that needs, if you have bend or whatever, they need to be screened, so they can't be seen from the street and the neighbors and whatever.
Okay.
Now speak up, Keith.
Okay, signs, I said, uh, you're allowed the three square foot sign on a post in the front yard. You talk about the signs in the building. Recommendation, there's. One by three is normal, the sign for, and you have two buildings. You're allowed to put. Signs up for. For customers directions, I mean, whatever, so as long as they're not. Break big.
Okay.
So you said you weren't gonna put a sign in the front yard, but.
We weren't planning on it.
It's allowed, the, the. Three square feet and. The single post and it has to be twenty-five feet off the road right of way, so.
Write that down.
But if, if you decide that later, you can shoot. Up to the.
Yeah.
Single post.
We're trying to keep a very small footprint, so it wasn't on our radar, but it would be helpful for customers, just, so, yeah, it's good to know.
Any other questions? Anyone in the public have any questions?
That's all I had.
So the public question, anyone on Zoom have any questions?
I do, my name is Scott Best and I own the property to the south of where Chuck and Kesha live. I wanted to ask Chuck, I've, I've had a conversation with Chuck recently in last month or so. About some, some construction he had on there and it's been resolved. But, but one of the things that I noticed on his Instagram page was that advertising the photo. Studios was that there was a retail shop on the facility that offers trinkets or some type of, of things to, to sell. Uh, is that still there, is that still gonna be there?
No, it's not, Scott, that was something that my daughter and I. I think did for like one summer, maybe four or five years ago, um, and just after that, we were like. It wouldn't even open like a year, we would do like a weekend here and there, we were crafting things and so no, that has not. No, we don't do that anymore. And don't plan on doing that again.
Okay, and the other question I had was, I also saw on the, on your Instagram page, um, that there was, there was, uh, numerous outside pictures that would be taken by. By various persons that had rented the, I, I assume the, the photo studio. Um, I don't know where those, those pictures were taken from or of, uh, but I, uh. My concern is just a, a basic trespassing on the property since we're so close to the studios. We're within fifteen feet, my property's within fifteen feet of the, uh, of the two studios. And, um, I have a, um, I have white pines that are planted on the property that. Have a substantial amount of trash in there, beer cans, so on and so forth. I don't live there anymore, I lived there for about twenty years down the road at fifty-two sixty Miller Paul. But I moved and we kept the property there and it is, uh, the woods are, I wanna say, I'll call it the, the, the white pine section of the lot. It is quite a ways in the street and the litter is, is quite a bit of litter inside those, where the white pines are, my concern is that. Folks would be coming across there and perhaps taking pictures in front of the trees. And then leaving their litter behind, is, is that, uh, do you foresee that as an issue?
No. No, I don't.
Okay. Um, and, and, and.
I'm at the farm every day now.
Okay.
So we have, when, when they, um. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No.
When they, um, sign the waivers to book for an hour, um, we say no alcoholic beverages, um, you know, we don't, we don't want that in there, we don't. Agree to having that, we, we don't drink, so I, I don't know where that would have come from.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and then the other, the only other thing I'm, I'm concerned about with my last statement on, on the potential for trespassing, uh, Chuck, and that is, uh. Uh, I, we had a discussion about, about the, the section of. Of grass that was that you were mowing that I, I had asked you not to mow. And I would appreciate if you would not do that, I would not mow that, that part of the property primarily, I'm just trying to maintain the, uh. I maintain the property twice a year, usually twice a year, I come down and mow it. Um, at least once a year, I did miss the first year that we had, after we had left in two thousand and ten, I missed the, the two thousand and eleven year. Um, but I haven't since, and I just wanna make sure that, that, uh, that we can kinda keep the property line straight and that there's no encroachment. Either from plants that are trees that you had put there before. Um, or, uh, any type of variance violations with, with, uh, outside buildings, and if you agree to that, I have, I have no issue with, uh. With the, uh, the business being there.
Yeah, sure, I, I mowed that strip right there.
Okay.
And sales of commodities or services. Produced on premises are permitted and provided such commodity or service are. Specified and approved as part of the application, so they're allowed, if they ask, they can sell. Sell items in, in, inside the store, they can't sell them outside, but they can sell them inside.
Okay.
And so that, that isn't.
But we don't, we don't plan on it, though.
Okay. That's basically all I have.
Okay, thank you. Now, could you state your name and address for the record, please, again?
Yeah, my name is Scott Best, that's B as in Bravo, E S T as in Tango. My address is twelve two fifty. Amarillo Avenue. Nagley, Ohio. Four, 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 one.
Right, thank you very much. Any other people have any? Questions? Hey. No other questions? Got a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
No question, a motion to close the, the hearing. One second.
Favor say aye?
Aye.
Post same sign, it is. Public portion is closed. Didn't mention, I make sure it gets on the record that. The. It was advertised in the newspaper and all the joining property owners were notified by mail. Any final statements from zoning, zoning director? Opened up to us, board members, anyone else have any questions for things to ask or discussion or whatever?
I'm good.
No. You can. We'll call for a motion then, if you can, if you wanna. Read it over first, then you can read it out loud. Have any questions?
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the application. Of HTBZA twenty-four dash oh one. For expanded home occupation by Pisha Ennis. At five eight oh one Miller Paul Road, Westville, Ohio, four three oh eight two. It's for a photography studio. In existing barn spaces. For arts and craft or other artistic. Instruction. There'll be no more than two non-resident employees. No more than ten deliveries, pickups per week. No more than thirty percent of the dwelling may be used. The outside displays of goods and, uh, goods or for, uh. Storage. Um, storage must be screened for view. Waste must be removed and waste storage must be screened. Signs must comply with the section eight point zero four. Article A, line six. Directional signs of less than three square feet may be mounted on the buildings. This hour shall end at ten PM. As not to disturb the neighbors.
You have any other things you wanna add to that or any, any part of?
That's the motion.
You have a motion, we need a second.
My second emotion.
Motion is second, we need a roll call vote, so Steve?
Yes, Steve Isner Brown, yes.
Jim?
Jim Steel Smith, yes.
Bill Gallagher, yes.
Kyle Ferris, yes.
Keith Campbell, yes, motion's passed.
Time is eight o'clock.
Since we have no secretary. Normally, then, they'll show, get a letter to you. Then we can get written up this, this part of the week. Do you see the letter, you have thirty days to come and get your permit from.
Wait for the.
Thirty days.
Come here.
It's, it's Steve Mike.
Oh, my. Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you guys.
Good luck.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn the hearing?
I move adjourn the hearing. My second.
The motion is second, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, post same sign.
That's it.
Hearing is adjourned.
Okay. Yeah, and thanks for waiting for us to come back. Sorry?
You paid to be when you.
Yeah, yeah. I did.
I don't remember, two months ago.
Yeah, oh, I did, I wrote the check.
I thought you did, I wouldn't.
Yeah.
I had no person to ask for sure.
That's okay, yes, I did. And you know where I live, if you find that I do, what I did.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, we have the hearing done, we have no minutes to do. Uh, we have no new applications. Do you have anything to bring to us tonight? Yeah.
Yeah, my name is Larry M, and I live down on. Hatch Road.
Right.
And, um, I, I, I just come up, you know, I'm concerned about when they're gonna start that roundabout, about the traffic that's gonna be on my road. I don't know if you've got the county or the state or anything, well, how come you haven't done it, because in a couple of months, they're gonna be doing something. I've already got enough traffic on that road already. Every time that you guys don't do nothing about that, they're telling the county to slow down down there. On that nine six oh five, because there's a wreck there, everything, wait.
Right. I think that's something you can bring up with the trustees.
Another thing, shoot, another thing they don't do, they put somebody down there and they route them right across that township road. That township road is not built for a lot of traffic.
I don't disagree with you, you need to bring up to the trustees, their meeting is Wednesday night.
I'm sorry, sir.
Need to bring up with the trustees, their meeting, their meeting is Wednesday night, there's money control that, we have, we have no control over that at all. It's that's not a zoning issue. That's a that's a trustees issue and and the county issue.
To a trustee meeting then.
That may be the best bet to bring up that trustees.
I'm just concerned about it because there is just the roads tore up now already. The east west section, they they spent more time in the dips than they have on the road. All the way down through there. And uh.
The next, the next trustee meeting is this Wednesday at seven o'clock.
Okay, well, I'm I'm okay at that there about that. I can come about see about it. That's the only thing I'm concerned about more than anything is that.
I I have no idea. I have no idea. We have no idea the schedule of the construction. We have no idea that that they have more more information than we would. I have no idea.
Like that. And this year, six oh five is a bunch of crap.
I mean, I live on it. I know.
Well, I can, I can, I live on Hatch Road way over half a mile away from the road, and I can hear the traffic going down there.
Yep.
Yeah, it's way louder.
Yeah.
My concern is mainly just that putting that roundabout in and and the way they're gonna do the traffic while they got the road shut off. But I tell you, everything is gonna run down. Right now, sir, I live on the north south, north, you know, south section of Hatch Road. But the people coming from Johnstown and that, they come down and they avoid that intersection and they come down my road just to get around. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And I mean, it's it's heavy. There's only eleven homes on that road. I tell you, there's an awful lot more than eleven vehicles running that road. And the school bus, it does the same thing. It comes flying down. I got neighbors complaining that why that school bus running like you do it like you're on a state highway.
Yeah.
It's just a township road with chip and seal that that east west part.
I can't tell you. I haven't been on that road forever. No, no reason to go that way usually. Alrighty.
That's my concern. I just, I'll just come to the meeting Wednesday then at seven o'clock.
I'm sure.
What, you know? What's going on? That's all. That's all I'm there for, just to find out what what's going on.
I think that can help you better than we can. Thank you.
Here may be a state road issue too, so.
Yeah. Even. They might have somebody you can contact. It's a state also.
This one when they snowplowed my mailbox out a couple of years ago, that was a, were you on the state road or the county road or the township road? And that's who you got a hold of.
Now that they're talking to the state, I went up to the state twice complaining about that it's just six oh five. For me going out to get on the six oh five, they didn't put up no, no markers that you can't pass on that Hatch Road. And uh you go, you go, you go out on Hatch Road right here into six oh five. And that there, there's a dip in it from Fancher Road, there's a dip that goes down and then it comes up. And if you then you can pass there, right? If they pass right there in the intersection. I mean, they passed me as I'm turning on the Fancher Road, they're passing. You know, and I'll tell you that I want to do something about putting some markers up, you know, no passing, but they won't even talk to you about it.
Okay, uh Mike, you have any, so there you are. Wait, nothing else you talked about earlier? Okay. Uh planning committee, Jim or Steve?
Yeah, uh nothing since last time. We're still working on the same overlays.
Maybe anything?
No.
I have, I have a question for you guys. I had a rumor about Westerville.
You did?
Yeah.
I had a lot of that going around.
Really?
Yeah.
So is that something that the trustees are looking at or you guys looking at or what?
Uh strategic planning. I was uh looking for a strategic partner. Uh they are in the mix.
That something's gonna be brought up to the public later on or?
Yeah, um so if you if you came to, well, which is what they've done, if you came to us and uh let's say I'm a builder and you say, I want you to build, design and build a skyscraper. And I'm looking, I got like five or six different ideas. And you come to me and say, where where are you? I'm still at five or six ideas. Then you come to me the next time and you say, how you doing? I'm down to three ideas. So I really don't have.
Much information, but it's just ideas.
Uh ideas and spitballing and that type of thing, but I think we're getting closer with that. And actually, we have some meetings with some developers that have some tax incentive ideas. So uh it's all fluid. It's all fluid, but we have uh mentioned Del uh West, I'm sorry, Westerville. Uh Holly went to Kalina and talked to them a while back because they have a sewer. And uh the old administration was not uh forth very helpful. I I understand the new administration, they have a new mayor now. Uh might be willing to help a little bit on the northwest corner. Doesn't help us the rest of the township, but we're talking about the northwest corner. So we're always looking at ideas. In fact, one of the developers called me this afternoon and had some ideas on uh uh public-private partnership to get uh utilities and that type of thing. And so um Westerville has the same thing. They got ideas on public-private partnerships, uh different things like that. Um that's where we're at. I I haven't designed the sky. We haven't, we haven't designed, totally designed a skyscraper yet, but we're working on it.
Okay. I just this person I'd heard about it the other day.
No, where'd you hear about that from?
I don't remember now, but
No.
You know, it's just like so I need to start coming to meetings, I guess.
Well, you know, we have, you know, a lot of people are talking about Sunbury. You know, they keep hitting us about Sunbury. Nothing with Sunbury. They're actually in just annexed a thousand acres of Trenton Township. So, you know, I don't think they would be a good strategic partner right now. Um there again, everything's fluid.
But I just heard something and I just thought.
Yeah. Well, it's a shady question. Stay tuned for more. Stay tuned for more.
Anything else for the good of the meeting? If not, have a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
I second the motion.
Get votes in second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, same thing. We're turned it.
That's that's your calling, Bill.
Wow, second?
Second.
Well, I'm good. I'll do it.
Hey, Larry, thanks for coming out.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I'm concerned about it.
Hey, Zoomers, we're shutting down here.
Thank you. No, he 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 walk in just sign the sheet, just like they they'll.
They'll stay, it's a public guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, they resurfaced six oh five and.